It's nine o'clock, we're going to open up our September second, two thousand fifteen, or September first, two thousand fifteen work session. If you'll please silence or shut off your cell phones at this time, we appreciate it. And please join us in a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We do have one addition to our agenda, desert cruisers slash loan application. Is there any other additions or pledges at this time? Being none, I would like to open up our meeting today with, we'll just take a moment of silence for the fallen town police officer, Mark Boone, that was lost over the last weekend, so hold the silence, please. Okay, we're going to move along with our agenda. I also want to acknowledge, this is our fair week, roundup week, one of the busiest weekends Lake County has. As we all know, we'll all be very busy with our kids and family and friends and everything, so let's all enjoy this week and enjoy the fair food and support our fair event around that. Anne, here's the first one up on the, well, why don't we vary from our agenda? We have Jeff Littlebridge here with the Desert Cruisers. If the board's okay with that, we'll go that first.
Sounds wonderful, thank you. Yesterday, I provided a few copies of the application from the Lake County Desert Cruisers. They're requesting a loan to update their timing system. So they're asking for fifteen thousand to be paid over two years, and they are agreeable to our standard interest rate, which is prime plus two percent. I have here a draft loan agreement and promissory note with the payment schedule. And I forwarded this to Jim Bailey this morning, so he probably hasn't had time to review it, but it's available for anyone here.
Thank you.
There was a question asked about financial ability to repay, and the Desert Cruisers is one of the participants or the organizers for the Destruction Derby, so that's a big event for them every year. So that's why they asked for this payment, the annual payment, to be made in October after they have the proceeds from the Derby.
Yeah, I'm more than fine with this. As far as the two years go in, two calendar years, it's actually going to be almost within one year.
Right, because that first payment is coming in so quickly, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I can change that.
Well, it's two calendar years, but it's slightly over a year.
About thirteen months.
Yep.
Slightly over here. So we will continue this on to our agenda because legal counsel isn't here to review whatever is the technicality side of it.
Yep.
Probably should do that.
Yep.
No decision made today, but I believe that you're going to see very much support on this board.
Yep.
So should see action on it tomorrow, which should be positive action.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Were you able to get ahold of Knife River? Pardon me? Were you ever able to connect with Knife River?
No.
Still not?
I haven't been able to, I don't know whether Phil has, and I don't know, you guys evidently haven't either.
We'll keep trying.
I know someone got ahold of him with the Desert Cruisers, and when I talked to Knife River, they said that the Desert Cruisers have been in contact with him about some paving. So I do know that, so I don't know who or what.
Phil's still working on it, Lee says, yesterday when I talked to Phil, he's trying to make that connection. So I think he's the one that's the lead on that. But if there's anything we can facilitate, help them to be a partner with the Desert Cruisers would be great.
I'll meet with Knife River tomorrow and I will bring it up.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
I guess we should add for the record that the Desert Cruisers does have five races a year, so they bring in racers from out of the area that do spend dollars in our local economy, and so they're trying to do everything they can to keep that activity moving forward. Every little bit helps in our area, so we appreciate the Desert Cruisers and their work on those events.
They sort of pack the stands at the Destruction Derby, too.
They do.
We do that.
Yep.
It's a big event.
It's a good thing for us to support.
We appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to our agenda. Our nine o'clock is the Wellness Committee update and the term run.
So the Wellness Committee looks at a variety of activities every year to increase the wellness of our employees, and we look at not only the physical well-being, but we try to look at emotional and relationship and even performance in the workplace. So Robin Rose came down a couple of years and held a speaking day for us, which was really well received, so the Wellness Committee thought about trying to do something similar to that again. Ben Paz suggested David Rabner, and he has heard him speak at a conference he has been to, and I've also heard David Rabner speak as well. So he's a very dynamic, engaging speaker, I guess you need to be, if you're going to talk with people for six hours, you better keep their interest, and so he does a great job with that. You can see the, kind of the topics there that he looks at is, you know, communicating effectively with everyone, different personality types, different levels of authority, things like that. Principle of principles, translating peak performance characteristics into specific job-related behaviors, so how to get people to peak performance. Art of self-management, improving emotional intelligence and ability to handle challenges and respond positively. I think we're all facing challenges at different points here at work, maybe even home lives and things like that, so he has a section on that topic. Assertiveness and influencing without authority, so learning specific communication tools that balance desired results with maintaining relationships while gaining commitment, not just compliance. So a way to get everybody on board and feel like they're moving towards this goal and the mission, not just complying, so over the long run, you have that buy-in. And then the value of building trust, learning the components of trust and improving effectiveness with others. So he's really excited to come to Lakeview, he's kind of doing a little bit of an Eastern Oregon tour, he's going to be in Baker City on Monday, speaking at the Treasures Conference, and then he will travel to Lakeview and speak with us on Thursday.
Yes, it's coming.
It is September twenty-fourth. When we thought about this type of activity, we knew that last time it conflicted with the road department's paving schedule, so this year, they said if we planned anything after September fifteenth, they could attend. So this date works for their construction schedule. Because, you know, and then we looked at different venues for hosting this, and there's pros and cons with a variety of venues. We chose Memorial Hall so that people could still respond to citizens that need our services if they're traveling that day and didn't realize we were offering limited services. So that way, being in Memorial Hall, there will be emergency phone numbers posted on the doors in offices that still need to provide limited services, they can make that phone call, or they can walk down Memorial Hall and flag somebody down. It can detract from the training, and we feel like the training is important, so that being pulled away every now and then is not, not the best, but we need to offer services to the public, so it is kind of a compromise. We will post it in the courthouse and then in the news as we can for those limited services on September twenty-fourth. Are there, oh, and the cost, his speaking cost is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. He is not going to charge us for any travel, it's just the speaking cost. If we can get seventy-five employees, there would be about fifty dollars per employee, so very cost-effective training compared to some other trainings that we try to attend and have to pay travel and motel and lodges, so very cost-effective.
This is our day session.
It's from nine to four with an hour lunch break, that we, Junior has agreed to cook for us and have a kind of traditional tasty Thursday.
I'm probably, I'm very supportive of wellness and everything. I guess the cost is quite good, in my opinion, but we only budgeted two thousand dollars on wellness, so, and I just talked to the, so going to take seventeen hundred and fifty dollars out of the fund that wasn't scheduled or wasn't budgeted to take any for wellness program out of.
So I talked with Denise before we signed the contract, and at that point in time, it wasn't real known what that staff training expense would be used for, and that staff training expense is actually a carryover from Robin Rose days, and so if there is other needs for that moving forward, we can.
We don't really have carryover on our general fund budgets, we re-budget every year.
And so that line item has been re-budgeted every year since Robin Rose, because this potential exists and was very well received. The other option, if that line item seems to be, you know, an issue, is I think the department has to be willing to spend dollars out of their training, but it's in their compensation line items as well, because we have significant, of course, budgeted throughout the county for.
I guess my point is, is during budgeting time, if we budget for wellness, we plan this amount, that's what I have in my mind, is that's what's going to work with wellness, if there's other places that we're going to be doing wellness besides the line item that's just for wellness, then I probably ought to be more aware of that point, so.
Well, we try to be flexible with what we are, you know, offering or encouraging, and so sometimes things come together and we make it happen, sometimes they don't. So to say that every year, we're going to bring in a speaker and we're going to budget for that, I don't know that I could make that commitment. If we can find a speaker and the cost is right and the timing is right, we'll see if we have funds to make it happen, and this year it seemed like we did.
Like I said, the department has kind of, if they have extra funds.
Yeah. The invite actually went to this whole building, our all-employee list, and so Circuit Court saw this event as well. They may be sending some staff if it works for their work timelines and things like that, and so we've asked them to pay the fifty dollars if they send employees. That would be the case if the library sends anybody as well, we haven't talked with the library, but if they did, outside organizations would need to.
I'm just checking my calendar, I know you may not be here on that day, but it sounds like it's there, if I can.
Great. I hope you guys can make it.
Other discussion or comments?
Nope.
Okay. And Mary is here just almost exactly on time.
Thanks, Anne.
So I have a budget resolution, do you want me to come back for that?
Yeah. We've got three minutes before Mary's actual time. I know she's going to pack the room with people, but geez, why is Mary around?
Yes. So Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero eight is in the matter of unanticipated revenue. Director Greer was before you a couple of weeks ago about the juvenile crime provider,
Prevention.
Yeah, provider prevention funding from the state. In the amount of, it ends up being forty-five thousand for the biennium, so it's twenty-two thousand five hundred per fiscal year for us. That needs to be paid out to providers in different contracts that he negotiates and enters into, and so this resolution increases grant resources and increases materials and services by twenty-two thousand five hundred. Questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Mary, come on up, hopefully help Cover Oregon grant.
Yes. As you know, we've done Cover Oregon the past year and a half, and that grant cycle was, so they put out RFPs throughout the state a little bit differently, they only awarded ten grants throughout the state, and we were one of them, so I was real pleased with that. I know Anne did the budget resolution, but Jim couldn't look at the contract because he was on vacation, so, so I'm a little, we kind of, we kind of put the cart before the horse, but this is the Cover Oregon contract, it allows us to increase some hours, we had Michaela only budgeted, you know, for a couple of days, she can go up to four, and I will, I was, I had some hours that weren't allocated, so I can go up a day. So we're continuing to provide health insurance applications for people, for OHP, and a little bit of help for people trying to enroll in QHD, but the grant is specifically for application assistance for OHP.
I gather, I'm trying to think here, we've done a resolution for unanticipated revenue in your budget.
Right.
Was that this one?
It was, because.
Okay, so now we're just going to prove the grant, okay.
Because we had it last.
I'm saying, I'm not sure why I had that deer in the head.
Yeah, and it was, wasn't for the full amount, because last year, we had a couple of grants, we had one from the school, it was great, from the Early Learning Hub, and we had, we were doing Cover Oregon, well, we assumed, I assumed, that Cover Oregon would just continue to pay us, and so I budgeted like forty thousand dollars for that program, and then we found out, no, you had to put in an RFP, so when we put in the RFP, the minimum grant was seventy-five thousand dollars, so we had to do a resolution for the thirty-five thousand.
So our resolution's, then, we just got to do the final.
We have to do the contract, and then I can send the bill to them.
We will take care of this tomorrow, unless there's other questions, Anne. Thank you for giving us this.
Cover Oregon has kind of gone away.
Oh, it's, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, really, really quick for me to say that, it's Oregon Health Insurance.
Replace this with Cover Oregon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got through our timed items, we have a couple people here, Jake, you're here on the Clamton County Jail MOU, that's our next item.
That's correct. What's up for you is MOU that we've entered into with Clamton County for the last couple of years that I've been here, I don't know how many years prior to that. Nevertheless, the only change to MOU is that this last fiscal year, Clamton County, because of some of the big busts, big organized crime activity they had over there, their jail was really full, so they weren't able to honor us, our beds, because they were full. So towards that last part of this last fiscal year, we had three, four, five, six people over there at a time using our bed, they're trying to limit that to three, one to hold themselves accountable, so we can have up to three people over there at any given time, but it also holds us accountable to limit us to three, so it's all in good working collaboration. They've, have had numerous conversations with Lieutenant Davidson from the Clamton County Jail, and she agrees, we will never be told, you know, they have to treat people over there at any given time.
To put the audience on the video, would you explain why we have beds over in Cape Falls?
We have beds due to Senate eleven forty-five, which was an act in nineteen ninety-seven, those folks sentenced to twelve months or less instead of going to prison, now do their time in the community, you know, in our county jails. The state offsets that cost by giving us some monies embedded within our budget, our adult community corrections budget, to offset those costs on our county jails, so in collaboration with, under Sheriff Howell, we reached out to Clamton County, and we ran seven hundred and thirty bed days per fiscal year from Clamton County Jail. And as the MOU notes, it's an MOU between myself, community corrections, and Clamton County Jail, I have always added dinner for my designated, and I, Paul is the designated, so Paul and I, and we did a big small work in collaboration to make sure we have folks over there. And it's a huge, huge relief for Lake County. I don't know if you guys follow the jail rosters, but the jail's been full pretty regularly the last two weeks, we have overflow, so we have two or three people, I think right now we have three folks over Clamton County Jail at certain times, so that frees up our space, and we're still at sixteen, so.
Plus, if we have unique situations, sometimes separation of, it can be family members, it can be relation, it can be just be.
Absolutely.
Way to separate.
Historically, we've had one of our county law enforcement folks, launched a jail, and fortunately, he was able to do his time over Clamton, so.
It's a tool, it's a tool we have to have.
So we didn't have that, we're about to come up with that. So it's.
And it's been sent to legal counsel, so we can have to know tomorrow.
What's that?
It's been sent to legal counsel for review.
Absolutely, all my MOUs and contracts can send, so I guess.
So this is an MOU, is there a contract along with it?
Nope, that's, that's the only business anymore, I'd say.
All right, we'll take care of it tomorrow.
What's that?
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
I appreciate that, and just a one-minute tidbit, Criminal Justice Commission, we're going to town September eleventh to audit our treatment court, there was a survey, they sent out one of those to go through the survey to see where we are in different points, and we actually did very well on the survey, so I'm anxious for them to come down, partake in our treatment court, get some feedback from them, because I'm working on our reinvestment grant application, and all their input and the changes we need to make is going to be important to us securing our grant, so I'm looking forward to.
What time are they going to be here on that day?
They will be here at eight o'clock in the morning, four staff, staff is upstairs in the jury room.
I have an executive back meeting that day, I won't be available.
My hope is that he, he will be coming to town, I believe, Thursday morning, he has family here in town, he's, he's a relative of the Olbuls, which are out on New Idaho, around the Greenberry, so he will be in town.
What's his name and position?
Ben Wyatt, yeah.
Our conversation last Friday, he was supposed to be here last Friday.
He was supposed to be here last Friday, but he, his boss, really made him stay and said something, big to-do and say, yeah, he had to be there for it.
What's his position?
He is the drug court coordinator within the Criminal Justice Commission, so he oversees all the treatment courts, and depending on how well our audit is and the changes we make in the future, if there's additional funding available specifically to specialty courts, drug court, mental health court, veterans' courts, we compile all three of those together, which is why we call it the treatment court, so in the future, Judge Nichols and I have talked, we will be applying for some of those grants, which opens the doors for more funding and more, more resources dedicated to that. Tomorrow at Rotary, myself and two of our treatment court participants will be providing a program opening, so that will be happening tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Mr. Durman, sir, you're up next, lot line adjustment, this is an ongoing thing for by some time, it looks like maybe tomorrow we'll make a decision on this.
Hopefully. I brought two guys, well, months and a half ago, with a lot of, for Delver Caso from the railroad, twenty-five, or a hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and fifty foot by thirty foot, not these men, but just Brian, whatever you want to call it, to get into his property, we asked Delver to take care of all the town plans for, for adjustments to move that line, so for access to on Third Street and all that, he's, he's done all that that we asked him to do, so. He had a survey, he had it through the town, the permits through the town, or the approval from the town, I guess, so.
Okay, our meeting tomorrow is in Silver Lake, so I don't see a need for you to drive to Silver Lake for this, but I would ask that, to all legal counsel today, make sure we have all documents and everything we need to act on, and without you there tomorrow, I don't, I don't think.
No, he's got an airport meeting tomorrow, right after lunch.
So basically, real legal counsel, what he says we need, and then we should go act on this tomorrow, get this taken care of. This, this is at no expense to the county, that's one of the agreements we've got with Delver.
Actually, it's going to, it's a benefit to the county, because they're giving up the right-of-way across the railroad, and that's huge, and we can do that, I'll give you a example, that's headache that we have, you know, I shouldn't say headache, but. A little safety issue.
Safety, neighbor complaints, the whole thing.
Did we ever find paperwork that actually established that right-of-way across the railroad tracks?
No, we never did.
Well, Delver did.
Well, Delver shows, well, when Adams, Adams owned it, they had one there, but from there, we were lower, they continued on.
It wasn't continued.
Right.
But that's fine, right, we're still closure.
So I'm, I'm good as long as I have all the documentation that we need, the clerk's office needs, what they need on the deed side of it.
Which, which Denise and I talked about that, and Darwin, he wasn't going to report it until you, they got your approval, so that's why we don't have a deed now, because he said that he wouldn't report it until we got your guys' approval for everything, and the surveyor will go in.
So we could, we could approve a contingent upon the survey, the deed being done correctly.
Yes.
You had some conversation with clerks, that fit? Not of approval, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, so it sounds like we should go make this happen tomorrow, Dave. Okay, any other questions? All right.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great day.
Our next item for tomorrow is, there's a recommendation for an appointment of a board member, Arlene Henry has resigned, and the museum board would like to have official making a recommendation of Sharon Lady Coats to the board, so that is on our agenda tomorrow, so we will act on that tomorrow. Next item's IT concentration equipment proposal, and I apologize, this is a pause.
You got this late yesterday.
Yeah, I haven't, give us no review.
Okay, so the overview is, Mr. Brown, our ACT tech boss, did some footwork for us on what we need for our boardroom in terms of audio and video needs, including microphones, speakers, recording devices, new TV that's going to go on the back wall for teleconference and whatnot. He did go out for three different quotes, one, as you will see, was thirty thousand dollars, they, he felt that they felt very secure with themselves and that they did a great job, but not that thirty thousand dollars was what we needed to spend. The second one was for eighty-five hundred dollars, he was not happy with the equipment that was provided in that, they don't, those systems don't match if they're not the same brands, which creates some issues and whatnot.
Is that company really called Conference Training Equipment?
Correct. So he, his recommendation was for the third one, it's eleven thousand nine thirty-five, which does include the cost of the new TV that we'll be using, and this, this company actually has centralized support, so when we do have an issue with their equipment, they're going to come fix it for us, ACT tech will do the install, that's included in the amount given, it's not very much, because it's just a little bit of running wires for speakers and whatnot, most of it's already been done, so.
Can you explain what centralized support means, is it an ongoing contract, ongoing cost, or is it for life of this stuff, for my?
I am going to have to ask him that question, I don't know what the, I'll ask him before tomorrow's meeting, what that, what that cost is.
Sometimes when I hear the word support, that means only the one year of the cost.
Yeah, I should have already, thank you for that, I will check into that, but this does include the control panel for, you know, speakers and everything that.
Simp, simplistic.
Very simple, it's one box, and it's got a bunch of dials on it, but they're, they mark them all very clearly, so we'll see how that is.
And you'll be controlling all the dials?
Correct, so good luck.
We'll go there.
Dan will finally be heard.
This one will go on the back wall behind you gentlemen, and the new TV will go out to the audience.
Will it be connected so that the same video would be on both?
That is correct.
So the audience can.
Yeah, you won't be able to run two different.
No, no, Ken, you can't watch TV while we're doing work behind.
They explained it to me that we cannot watch two different football games at the same time.
That's, Dan is the sports, I like history channel myself.
So there you go.
So history on this one, and sports on the other one.
Yeah.
Can't do, we gotta play the same thing.
Don't tell me what we can't do, tell us how we can.
So Denise, naturally, you know, I always go, where's this budgeted, was it budgeted, do we have the money to do this?
Um, we are going to have to run it through the IT side, there was a little bit of confusion when we budgeted for the remodel, and, um, for some reason, that amount that was budgeted for the IT side was budgeted for much less than what was recommended, but, um, we're gonna make it work through the IT side.
There's, there's enough on the IT side to be able to do this?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to work with the treasurer though and see, because I only have ten thousand budgeted for capital, so I'm gonna have to see how, how to make it work, but there is money there, it's just.
Okay, and we'll check on the.
I will check on.
The support department?
Yes.
Other questions? Okay, so Denise, again, potential IT equipment donation discussion.
We received an email from, um, Adele School District, asking us about equipment that we pulled out of our planning department a few years ago. They're Mac computers, they are not compatible with our system, we don't utilize those computers any longer. I'm asking to just be able to donate those computers to the school district and get them out of our.
Put them.
Our store space, yeah. ACT Tech will wipe them, so they won't have any of our info on them, but.
Seems like we just act on this by think legal counsel wants to make sure, give us some advice on this probably tomorrow.
That is correct.
So we'll continue this tomorrow.
Okay.
To me, it's sort of a no brainer, but we.
As far, as far as wiping the computer, is our folks gonna consult with Hillary on how to do that?
I'm not sure that she wiped hers.
You used pledge, you used pledge and an old sock, that's how you wipe it.
That was very inappropriate, but.
That's actually very appropriate, given the release.
Yeah, yeah. Potential vehicle donation discussion.
Okay, so on, on that same kind of note, we have our chief that is utilized by the juvenile department at this time, it is going to be cycled out. We've ordered them a new vehicle as of a month or so, though you guys approved that purchase. The senior center has expressed interest in that vehicle to use for their Mills for Wheels program, um, so my recommendation is to donate. Legal counsel's gonna have to weigh it on us too, to see if we need to, um, sell it to him for a dollar or what we have to do, but.
I, I probably speak for the whole board, we're very excited about being able to support and help the senior center with that.
Yep.
And we'll work on that tomorrow also. STF vehicle, RFQ recommendations, you're finally there.
I warned you guys, today was all about me. Okay, so we went out for RFQ for vans, um, for our Ladders of Opportunity grant that was awarded to the county last year. I received three, um, all vehicles, there were three different vehicles, I sent all of those RFQs over to the senior center, and let them kind of decipher what was, what they felt their best use was, what vehicle was gonna fit their use the best. Um, and they felt that the vehicle from Hall Motor Company, which is a Ford Transit, um, one fifty wagon, it is a van, um, it's kind of a taller roped van, would fit their needs the best, so. I'm, I'm going off of their recommendations since they're going to be utilizing it. There are a couple of items that we will need to add, um, that were not included in our RFQ request, but once they reviewed it, they wanted to make sure they had, which included defrost for the rear, and a reverse sensing system for when they back up, so.
Okay. Did they catch that, or did you?
They did.
That's a good catch.
They did a great job.
Very good.
We also, um, are allowed via that grant, they want everything that is needed to operate that vehicle included in the grant. So, um, as we work through this, we're also gonna add their winter tires to that grant.
Great.
So we'll make sure that they have everything we need, tie down straps for wheelchairs, all of that.
Is it gonna be cost effective with the life, the life of that vehicle when we do the tires to do rims?
Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
Very good, and this is for two.
Two vans.
Two vans, and they will be one at the senior center here, and one in Central.
Correct, the one, um, on the south end of the county will be stationed at the senior center, it'll be used for Plushadale, um, Pine Creek, West Side, Salt Falls area. And the other one will be stationed in Summer Lake and utilized from Paisley on, uh, however far.
The hole.
To go, yeah.
And, and all the operations will be managed through Lake County Senior Center.
That is correct, insurance, all of that will be managed through their operation.
Great, great grant for him to get to, very good.
Um, on another note, I actually spent some time at Hall Motor Company last night, they extended an invitation to the three of you for their grand opening for the new GM store this Thursday at noon, um, so they're gonna do a little ribbon, ribbon cutting ceremony and.
At noon?
Even on Thursday.
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly, they're also having five to nine just open house to.
I believe that is correct. So.
Yeah, a lot of great additions to our community, beautiful investment that they've done in our community, if we can make it, that'd be, be great. Twelve o'clock Thursday, you'll be there.
Well, I'm always there, I get a read news every day, that's the reason you're here.
Dan's their favorite customer.
Okay, um, we do, um, for tomorrow, I'm looking on here, we have a public hearing on R D M, so that's an actual hearing, so we will discuss that tomorrow.
We are in Silver Lake.
In Silver Lake.
And we do have access to the fire hall?
Deputy O'Rourke has promised me he will be there at nine thirty, so.
So Commissioner, if you don't mind, I'm gonna just, for a minute here, you know, with department updates, discuss that, um, tomorrow, there's a pretty good chance we'll have an executive session. I haven't had a chance to share it with Commissioner Kestrel, I've shared it with you, I do have a national conference called eleven, I intended to just do it on myself, I don't even know so forth, but there's a really good chance that I need to be in that session with the two of you. Both are kind of important, so I didn't know if there were any options for us to look at tomorrow, like nine thirty, starting off with that, because it's not a timed item, starting off with an executive session, or if I just should simply get ahold of Mike Zucco or executive director and tell him I can't be there.
Cause yours at.
It's at eleven.
It's at eleven. We can vary from our schedule, and I think if legal counsel's there, I think nine thirty would be appropriate time, go ahead and do the executive session.
It's a closed session, Jeff, for us, not the public.
Right, that's, I just wanted.
With your schedule and talk, but I think that's very appropriate, so would you arrange that with legal counsel?
And can you double check back with Deputy O'Rourke to be sure that he knows that you need to get in there at nine thirty?
And if it needs to be earlier than that, nine's fine with me also.
Well, let's, let's let Denise talk to legal counsel and see what his view, because Jay, I mean, I think intends to be up there.
He's gonna be surprised when he doesn't have to drive all the way to Lakeview, letting him know it's in Silver Lake, so he can be, that's two hours.
But as far as, actually, yeah, I'm thinking more of how long he thinks it might take.
Yep, yep, so, no, that.
Absolutely, if you were okay with that, that would help.
Yeah, because we have a couple, couple timed items, so we can just do it right now.
Jay, is it essential that Jay be there in person, or can he phone in?
I think he's working with legal counsel today.
He told me he was coming.
Just that he has a big workload on him.
Yes, I, we probably, I'll talk to him, and I recommend it, pardon me, talk to legal counsel and find out what's recommended.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, you'll take care of that, uh, department updates. You wanna.
Sure.
Short and sweet?
Sure. Traveled to the northern part of the county on Friday, and I met with Cascade Roofing Systems. And, um, they have, they're in the process of restructuring, and they just purchased some new equipment to allow them to focus and be more involved in a niche market with their trusses. They're moving away from doing, um, custom work, although he's got a few clients that he will do a little bit of, you know, custom work for custom homes and that sort of thing, and he's moving into a larger, uh, trust component for pole barns and for industrial buildings, because it, um, with his new equipment, which is, you know, if you ever have a chance to stop by there and see what they're doing, it's pretty, it's very interesting and impressive. He has, i- in the process of doing this, he's reduced his workforce from fifteen to ten, he's, uh, taken two of his office folks that, that were sort of duly trained, and he's put them back out on the floor to do work, and he's brought his wife in to be involved in the office. And I think he's done some smart things, I think it's difficult to make these changes sometimes, but it was a matter of, um, he, it, the custom market was sort of eating up, um, time and money, and he can, you know, he just can do better with what's going on with the pole barn and the industrial market, barn market, basically, so that was really, I mean, it was educational for me, um, there may be, I'm gonna be talking with Betty and, um, Larry Holsken at Business Oregon, we may be able to help them a little bit with their retooling, so to speak, but I'll, I'll find out more about that. I was able to, I had a, um, couple of different conversations, met with Marie Lehman, that's always like a, a, a business thing and a pleasure thing to find out how things are going, you know, in the ranching community, and it was really nice to know that it's, you know, all thumbs up, I mean, they're just doing really well. Everybody seems to be doing well in that regard. Uh, the Lake County, or the Lakeview Community Partnership Main Street Program, um, John Cogar opened, um, one of his, uh, office spaces or, um, spaces in the bottom floor of the Hereford Building to be a historic poster workshop for the last two weeks, and he and a group of volunteers have been putting together historic photograph posters to hang in windows in, um, in town over the holiday weekend, and that's coming along really well, and it's very fun, and there has been a constant flow of, um, uh, elderly citizens that have lots of, um, information to flesh out where these pictures are, you know, there's questions about people and places, et cetera, so it's been a really fun project, as well as, um, you know, kind of helping to spiff up things downtown and to bring people downtown, you know, I mean, the fairgrounds, obviously, we've got a lot going on out there, but we've lost some of the juice downtown, and this might help with that a little bit, along with the hamburger stand.
When are they, everybody's got good nights.
I know, I know.
So when are they hanging the posters?
I think that beginning Wednesday evening, we're gonna start, um, putting them in, so they should be up in, we're hoping in, uh, Friday, so that they'll be there, you know, throughout, they'll be there probably for a week or so or more, we don't know how long, you know, until people decide they don't want to be seeing them out there anymore. And we have enough that we probably, in a couple of weeks, can switch out. There's, I, I think probably a hundred and fifty photos, it's been fabulous, Debbie Roush Thornton has been really generous, she has a lot of, um, photos from the Thornton family allowed us to use them and, and some other folks in the area, so that's just kind of a highlight for the weekend. And, um, was able to, uh, work a little bit with the Desert Cruisers to help them do their initial thinking about applying for their grant, which I'm really pleased that they were able to do that. I think that they're, when I spoke with, um, Philip Elder, he said they were, they actually had six races, and they were gonna have to cut it back because this timing device went out and is not repairable. And I asked him how many folks come, and he says anywhere between fifteen and fifty entries, which can usually be two to three people per entry that come from out of town, there's like, everybody here in town. So it is a significant, you know, summertime activity that does bring folks in, so I'm really pleased that we'll be able to help them out.
Very good.
Alright, Cascaders, probably, they are also selling metal now too, you can order metal, unless you change.
Yes, metal roofing, you're right.
Yeah, it's just a great.
Really good pricing and, yes.
Really very reasonable price, and I, I, since I've been involved from way back, we've been involved from way back.
Right.
We like seeing the success, every time I see a Cascade truck with trusses on it, it's like, yes.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, like I said, they, they, I, I was really impressed with, you know, their thought process, it's tough when you have to make those kinds of decisions, you know, make, change is always difficult, but I think they've, they've really been smart about how they're doing this.
He survived the recession and the downturn in the market, so.
Yes.
Very supportive, so that's, that's very good news, thank you.
Yeah.
So, get through this liaison updates, the ever famous liaison updates.
I'll go.
I don't have any famous ones, so I'm.
I don't have anything, that's what I'm doing. On the eighth, I'll have another meeting with Fish Wildlife Refuge, County Incorporating Agency, CCP, Comprehensive Conservation Plan. We're in with the ingredients all day. On the tenth, just for refresh, we have the, uh, Water Creek Ration Facility tenure in person. And on the thirteenth also, in the afternoon, I'll be up in Summer Lake for BoDOT, and some of the communities out there working on the speed, uh, concerned that, and local strips.
Is the date on that again?
It's a Thursday, uh, September tenth, three o'clock, Summer Lake, West End. There's a local government advisory committee meeting on the fourteenth in Salem, we've got some good topics, I'm not sure if I'll go or not. I probably won't, because on the fourteenth, which is a Monday, Greg Walden will be in town for a town hall meeting, uh, in the morning. Think about Tenish, about ten thirty-ish, uh, I was in communication yesterday, the Beatty Butte Ranchers have been wanting to meet with Greg on wild horses, and they may have a pre-town hall meeting with the ranchers around Tenish, the time and the location is not well defined yet. But for now, the town hall would be ten thirty, and trying to get permission to use the Beatty School auditorium, when they get formed up, pass it on.
Did they send out an email or something on that?
No, it was just our initial conversation yesterday, they haven't sent it out until they get the, uh, location and time set. And what spurred it was, the, several months ago, the Beatty Butte Ranchers wanted to meet with Greg, and we've been trying to set that up, so that's what kind of got the change in venue for Greg to be in town sometime this month. So we'll be hearing about it as soon as they get it formed up, it's a part of our time location. But with the Beatty Butte Ranchers and Wild Horse Scenario meeting with Greg prior to, that probably precluded us from having a pre-meeting with Greg.
Yeah, um, for me, I, I, as you all know, Suzanne Joelberg is taking another job, I have regional solutions that day at ten. If Greg's in town, I'd like to spend time there also, so I, I wasn't aware, to have things get formed up, have them communicate with, with all of us, most, you would.
Like I said, that just came back yesterday afternoon.
Okay. Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'm done.
Yeah. Well, I was just gonna introduce Suzanne Joelberg to take another job. Um, my AOC district is Tuesday the eighth, right after our fair. There's, I'm not going to that. I haven't seen the agenda, there wasn't anything there. Or I don't know if there's quite anything really compelling forward.
Yeah.
I don't know if either one of you are going, but I didn't see anything that was.
I have that cooperative agency meeting all day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, I have Executive Act meeting on the eleventh in Bligh. And then I also have written down the ten year, uh, anniversary of opening the Water Creek Correctional Facility that year. Other than that, be sure, need a lot of fare food this weekend.
Darren Derby come to the Bayview Cook Shack?
Yeah, I, I would probably be off Thursday and Friday both this week. I may come in Thursday morning, I'm not sure. I'm gonna partake in all the fare I can Thursday to Friday.
Currently fries.
I'll be out, probably mid-afternoon Thursday, uh, then back, start the next week, so.
Denise is off all Thursday and Friday.
I'll probably wander in and out, but it's my last year as a leader, so.
There you go.
So you're stuck with me next year.
So speaking of wandering, I talked to, well, I talked to Dave yesterday and did a little touring our remodel projects. And Travis King saw me yesterday and were, I mean, and they really are hoping, other than just some finishing things next week, that on Tuesday we will be doing our checklist of what's, what's left to do.
Punch card? I got one, a punch list or?
Punch list. Uh, but that's their belief is that I, it sounded to me like they're gonna work through the weekend 'cause he was wondering if I'd be around that, he'd look at things from the weekend and I said no.
No.
So.
Absolutely not.
Um, the Whiflick call tomorrow will be followed up. It's, it's going to be a lot about discussion with the National Strategic Committee. And what we're asking them, the Land Management Leadership Council was asking them to do, or ask them to do after the Ashland meeting. And we will be following that up. I don't remember those dates Denise, I think it's October fifth at noon, I'll fly out. Be there the sixth and the seventh and fly back either late, I think it's late on the seventh. Uh, in DC, the Whiflick Committee will be meeting back there. Um, Commissioner Kestner shared with us last week his, his appointment to the NACO Committee. For the last several years with your guys' blessing, I've been involved with, with the, uh, Public Lands, Nat, National Association of Counties Public Lands. And I got my letter from Sally, probably last Friday, but opened it yesterday. Uh, the only thing I will say, and, you know, I think it's good for us personally to be involved in a lot of different things. Uh, based upon, you know, where we're at financially, I'll probably defer to Commissioner Kestner with his new involvement in that committee for our, our legislative meeting. I, I've always tried to match that up, the five years I've been involved with Whiflick, 'cause NACO pretty much pays my way. That's not gonna happen this year during the legislative conference back in DC, nor the summer conference unless, uh, Chris Marklin specifically says we'll take care of it, 'cause they are wanting some updates on, on the activities around the, the Whiflick Committee, uh, from the representatives of, of the National Association of Counties. And I've explained to them. So as we go into this next spring, you know, I think we'll have the opportunity to, to budget a little bit better with that knowledge, 'cause those are costly trips, both of those. So what I'm saying is I'm gonna defer and not plan on attending either of those this coming year. Uh, we had a roundtable.
Well, as it gets closer to, to coordinate between the two of, uh, two of you, I'm, I'm not the one that, I don't buy it, but.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
I was gonna getcha.
Make, make sure that the representative, that's gonna bring the most to the county from whichever one of you need to be there. I mean.
Well, I think Commissioner Kestner will find, just since we're talking about it, he'll find on his own, you know, what, what are these meetings, when and with agendas, what's valuable and it isn't. I attended, you know, with your guys' blessing earlier on in my commissioner career, you know, fairly regular. Uh, I have found probably the most beneficial for me personally was the legislative conference. And it's in part because we've been able to get the other Whiflick members to agree to schedule at the same time. So it's one trip for a couple of different, uh, activities. Uh, but to, you know, it's, it's one of those to each their own. Uh, I found the national conferences, you know, not quite as valuable for me personally, working with, with, uh, public lands. Uh, you know, that's, that's just, you know, like I said, y'all kind of figure that out as you go along. See what's valuable and what isn't.
Now, your appointment's still with technology?
Uh, the way it read, I'm still waiting for confirmation, it said nominated.
No, we're on it.
Okay. It's for.
What I read, I thought you were there.
Yeah, well, I did too initially, but I always pick out, because nomination is nomination. But, uh, it's on, uh, telecommunication, which as you know, I've been really heavy on trying to get, 'cause that's our future for us, is computer, internet, telecommunication, especially out here in this rural setting. And the other part is technology. I'm yet to see just what that technology, uh, ran to be.
Well, what I'm hoping Commissioner, and once again, I'll say you will figure it out on your own. I'm hoping you're able to attend, like, the Transportation Committee and, uh, and Energy, Environment, Land use. They don't always, you know, coincide at the same time.
Yeah.
It's my belief and, and I appreciate the work you've done on the technology side, the Internet Connect and all those things. I think you'll find, and maybe I'll be wrong, that you're gonna find a great deal of value in some of those other committees that you may wanna get.
Get, get on the lookout.
Yeah, 'cause they, they, yeah.
After seeing the plane dropping the voyage on the NACO, um, website too, you guys can fly on them.
Well, we're flying planes that aren't heavy.
I used to, I used to fly a lot.
And they're dropping people.
Yeah. I used to fly a lot back in the seventies and eighties. And then right up around late eighties, they was having all these old plane mishaps. And I was flying down to New Orleans one time and for a two-week session. I was with the Forest Service. And there's that case where the canopy came off and the stewardess got lost coming to Hawaii.
Oh, yes.
And another one, the plane crashed into cornfields of Iowa someplace. I mean, there was just a sequence. I flew down to, uh, New Orleans and had a real love, rough landing, like bounce, bounce, bounce. Was never experienced before. When I got back on the plane two weeks later to come back, we sat there in that humidity for endless hours. The stewardess said, "Small technicality, wait a few minutes, small technicality, wait a few minutes." She said it three times over the course of time. Then the captain came on and said, "I must ask you to disembark, this plane is broken." And I have not flown since.
You can imagine, imagine my anxiety how that was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I went back to New Orleans to Mardi Gras.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So should I finish?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting you.
That's all right.
I had to get that thing scurried out.
That's right. So last Thursday, I attended a roundtable discussion with Secretary Tom Vilsack. And it was a multifaceted, uh, meeting that we had with him. The governor was there, uh, we held it up at the, the World Forestry Center by the zoo in Portland. And he announced, uh, one of the announcements that he was there for was the Sage Grass Initiative two point oh funding that, that's going forward, that Commissioner Kestner has been working on for quite a while now. Uh, two hundred million for the eleven western states and a lot of discussion around because of the different parties that were there. There were a lot of state and federal folks and, and specialized interest entities that were there. He, he really wanted to talk about the fire stuff and, uh, the ongoing fire siege in the west. And so we spent a great deal of time on that and I was fortunate enough to get to spend a little bit of time with him after the meeting and talking about some of the things, 'cause, uh, one of the members, two of the members that are on Whiflick that work directly for him, under Secretary Robert Bonney, as well as the chief of the Forest Service, Tom Tidwell, uh, just expressed my appreciation for the work that they've done and, and leadership that they've shown within the committee. But the, uh, the activities that, you know, are hopefully gonna lead us with the COEC strategy forward with our public land management issues. And, and he's of the same belief, he and Secretary Jule both believe in the strategy. So that's the short version of that meeting. That's it.
I, I missed two things I needed to update you on. Uh, last week did have a conference call with ODOT Rail, which Hanson and others from ODOT, along with Rob DeDilius, Jeff Manernak, myself, Dave Berman. Just for the awareness, um, for our railroads in accepted status, what can be hauled as far as hazmat on there and the guidelines. It's a very positive meeting. Um, you're along with the accepted status, we're able to haul five hazmat cars at one time. Uh, Red Rock will produce about ten cars a week. We do two pulls a week, so that's within, very easily done. But the positive side of it was, is the building the relationship between ODOT Rail, our, um, our own railroad, Rob DeDilius is very positive. Um, so that was a good, good thing, just to give you guys an update, trying to. Butch wanted to make sure through Regional Solutions, everything we stayed ahead of the game, kept all the players going. So the, the setup is very good. Um, the other thing last week, Roadmaster Rick Demille, you and I, we went up to Groos and we actually inventoried every culvert, walked through and drove it, walked down the culverts, inventoried every culvert for this federal grant for next year that's gonna come to redo that. So Rick, uh, we mapped them all out on the engineered plans and Rick has met with, uh, engineer to give our view of which ones may not need to be replaced. Um, it's a grant, it's all expensive no matter what, but some of the cuts in that road could be pretty extreme. There could be some wiring needed, but, um, it was a good, hard day's worth of work. Actually Denise even said, "I look tired," when we came in, so.
Well, you look tired right now.
Yeah, well, I'm ti- I'm tired of Mr. Schall, I'm tired of putting up with you, sir.
Okay. I am too.
No, but that was, that's really good. I guess my point is, is Rick is really putting on a lot to, this grant is, uh, takes a lot of his time. It is a good day's worth of work and he's making sure that we're, we're gonna get this done appropriately. There's a few culverts that hopefully we might, may even replace this year because of its very dry year drought here, so. Anyways, just wanted to update you on that. And the, the grants going forward next year will be very busy for him out there. We've got the, the Dog Lake lane and then there's a plush chip seal and the plush, um, overlay that's all full federal dollars. And with these federal dollars, there's so much compliance issues coming as far as paperwork.
Mr. Bailey and Mr. Collins are both good with nine thirty tomorrow, so. I remember that.
Hold up with us, Ken. Mr. Chair, I'll just add, uh, I'll be working on the GILAN Management EIS to amend the, uh, resource management plans. Uh, they went kind of quiet on us and then they came up with their fine rate, they got a whole lot of input. But there's one thing that is a little, uh, issue I have concern with the EIS. I'll be looking into the, going to, from three NRAs, natural research areas, um, that affects our ranchers. Three I'm gonna be, uh, be void of livestock racing in five years. And I'll be doing a lot of research, trying to find out what's their data to justify that.
I, I, I appreciate that so much that we need to be all over the top because of, well, I mentioned this many times, I go back to when you worked at the GILAN and the RMP was done and, um, didn't really agree with some of the RNAs and ACs.
I didn't agree with that.
And, and, and we're, we're today going to live with, they're gonna push it to the next level. And it's just a, a drive to get, no pun intended, a drive to get the cattle off of there.
It is, in my opinion, very much.
Well, I, I'm glad Commissioner Kestner brought that up, 'cause that was part of our discussion. I think both of us, one of the best tools for mitigation of the wildfire situation on our desert lands, our cattle, sheep. And just contrary, bless you, it's, it's a hundred and eighty degrees out from what John O'Keefe said. You know, he's, he's, he's very upset by some of the most recent news releases suggesting cattle are the problem of our situation. It's like, there's no way over the course of three million plus acres of desert landscape, just here alone. Commissioner Kestner, as I said, knows this as well as anybody, that you can do, no matter how much money we throw at it, mechanical treatments that would satisfactorily, on a year-to-year basis, reduce the risk that we need to for the exposure that we have on, in those, in those fuel types, so.
Yeah, just to exemplify that, what I was told by a representative from Grant County on the prior Canyon City.
Canyon Creek.
It started in a forest area that then, uh, fuels reduced, but no grazing. So the grass was knee-high. And when you get a grass fire, it goes faster than you can catch it.
Sure.
And then there's over two hundred thousand acres over in the Hawaii area on GILAN Management. And I hope that GILAN Management excluded livestock racing because of a previous fire for extended number of years. And again, they had knee-high grass, no lightning, and lost another two hundred thousand of Brian's Sage Grass habitat because livestock was excluded.
Yep. It is. That, that's, and I hate to go down this path before, but it is so irritating that we, everybody knows the right thing that needs to be done. In my opinion, the right thing is to manage and use catalyzism to manage our private land, our public lands. And, um.
Use of allusion is what Andy says.
And we just continue to have huge fires, huge crossfire fires, huge loss of resource. Dan has a life for himself because he preaches this all the time, but it's, it's infuriating.
Well, what's frustrating, you know, it's on YouTube, thanks to Jimmy, this comment I'm about to make, is that it's not about, it's not about the protection, it's not about these individual species or collectively. If it was, I mean, as you said, it only makes sense, it's common sense. It's about restricting any access and use to our public lands and that's why we as a board need to just continue that fight. And many others need to participate in that because.
Well, today, as we sat here speaking, this year, we're losing five percent of our forested lands in the United States. Five percent, that's twenty years, it could all be counted. We've had the discussion.
Yep.
As millions, billions of dollars, resource, fight firefighting. And no special interest groups are stepping up and saying, "We need to start managing these lands to make them fire resilient." Use fire as a tool, I have pre-commercial training or whatever. They're just letting them burn away without no opposition. We need to be a team, they need to be at the table with us and we need to protect these lands. Five percent, we're, we're at five percent now, fire season's not over.
That's exactly right. Fortunately, this cooler weather, they have been able to get, start to get a handle on some of these very large fires, the one up on the Okanagan, over three hundred thousand acres and just, you know, vast acreages you alluded to with those figures. But the, uh, when, when you talk about the, the five percent loss, you know, I don't know what the calculations are on the historic, and I say historic, the, the last ten years running prior to this year, the average resource value lost has been running at about ten billion dollars. Has nothing to do with suppression costs or anything else around that. And that's something no one talks about, that's, that's, and we're losing it for a long period of time, decades and decades.
Well, but then put it in perspective, if five percent of our nation's forest turns out to be seven and a half million acres, is it something in that neighborhood, seven million?
Yeah, on the, on the national forest system, it's, what, a hundred and ninety-three million? And, uh, it's closer to ten million acres is five percent.
Yeah, so five percent doesn't sound like much, but then when you get into that many acres, it's just. acres, it's just unbelievable.
It's also affecting private lands, sounds very poignant.
Huge, absolutely huge.
And homes and everything else, it's, it's crazy.
And, and as we sit in our positions and try to lobby, and you guys, all of us work for healthier forests, better range management, it does get frustrating.
Well, the last figure I saw on this was last week, we were two million acres ahead. This puts it in perspective of the condition of the landscape, on these forested landscapes. We were two million acres ahead of the, the ten-year average, the number of acres burned, and we had done that with ten thousand less fires.
Okay, well, we can talk all day, we're all very passionate about our range land and our forest land. Denise, did you have some other nine thirty?
Nine thirty, we're good to go. Mr. Brown, did you get back to me, centralized support means active support, and no, there is no additional call.
That's good information. With that, we will adjourn in ten minutes after ten.
We could have less than.